But just to be positive, but clear. And also just to take no more than a couple of minutes speaking on your own, so we can move along. And then when you're done, we will basically say thanks for giving us your perspective. We'll probably make some notes. And in most meetings, we will go on with the meeting as scheduled. But I think because I have a sense that a lot of you are here to talk about the flag flying. For what? We're going to shift right in from public comment and the flag flying discussion here. That makes sense? So I'm glad to have you here. And we sometimes are wishing we would hear more from the community and school, school staff. So we're hearing it in full voice tonight. So thank you for coming.
I'm happy to have you.
Yeah, definitely. So we are all ears. I don't know whether you all want to speak individually or you have a few people, but. I guess I'm going to cut this off maybe at. We'll give buddy two minutes. Okay? Take it away. You could just introduce yourselves so we can know who's speaking and. We will listen to you.
How do you count of residents to me?
Sure. Or. Can I start with just a question? Actually, just like about an agenda item because that will drive how I use my public time.
Um, potentially, that depends on what question is.
The question is, the minutes from that you approved from the last meeting were. Really unclear as to what your flag discussion was going to be. So right now it simply says flag discussion. Based on the reading of last. Meetings minutes. It seems like that is simply focused on discussion of a poll. Though.
I can answer that.
Things have come up that have made us question like, what is this discussion? So I think driving by comments or questions in public comment time is really based on what your discussion is actually about. And that hasn't been really clearly framed to the public. So that I put.
Certainly can answer that. We just had a discussion about. Uh, the need to make minutes clearer so that people know the full. Range of the discussion. So to answer your question, Lauren. At our last meeting, we had two sort of questions among board members that we decided to postpone till this meeting. One is, do we need to have two flag polls to continue to fly the US flag? And the rainbow and BLM flags? The second question that was tabled because we want to get some more information was. Should we, as a school, continue to fly the rainbow and BLM flags at all? So those two things are both under discussion tonight. It turns out that based on some research we did between last meeting and this one. The question of one flow, one flag poll or two has been. Determined, we only one. And so I think we'll get that out there. But most of the discussion, I think, is an opportunity for us. As board members to hear. Each other's perspectives. It was five years ago that those flags were determined. Uh, by a previous student body and previous board to fly. And obviously. This is an opportunity for us to hear the perspectives of the current board and the current school community. Makes sense? Okay. So we're ready to hear comments.
I'm happy to speak again. My name is Johnny Flood.
Yep.
Uh, performing as a teacher at Cabot. It's my second year. I think a lot of the reason I wanted to come tonight and, and hear from the board, but also speak briefly. Is actually related to sort of what happened la- at the end of last week with the rollout of a survey that was sent. Um, to teachers. On Thurs- and I'm not a classroom teacher, so I didn't. For whatever reason, I wasn't included on this email. But an email was sent to classroom teachers fifth through 12th grade. On Thursday morning saying that an urgent, something was urgent and needed to be completed before noon. And it was a survey about the flags. And whether or not both of them should fly with a sort of a brief summary. Of each flag and a yes or no option. This was sent to, you know. If these are students as young as eleven. Up through 12th grade. With urgency and. Like. As a teacher, it feels that to me felt really irresponsible and it felt like a really big missed opportunity. Like these, these are flags where almost, you know. Reasonable adults can disagree about how they, how they are interpreted and what they mean. Um, and to send it to children with no. Um, you know, we're a school, we teach and we educate, and this is a really great opportunity to actually. Have lessons and learning about what led to this and the history of it and, and where we're headed next and. What a great door. What a great door to open. And we really didn't get that with this survey and the way it was rolled out. And I think. I just, I think it put a lot of. Unfair pressure on certain students. To have that put in front of them without a lot of discussion. And I think it made a lot of staff members feel. Really concerned and frustrated and, and like, is, is this a conversation we should be having as a whole? Is this? It almost felt like policy. Um, for a workplace to have a discussion and a conversation about it. So a lot of my feelings and a lot of what I want to express. Is coming from the place of an educator and just to say. This is something actually we should be working on more. And these are conversations we should be having more as communities and with our children and. Uh, the way that it was presented to our student body felt really concerning and irresponsible from an education perspective. That's my comment.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that. Sorry, again, Kyla Carrion and I work on the elementary side of things, so we were not privy to this survey. Um, which also felt. Kind of exclusionary. Um, I remember being interviewed for a job here and being asked specifically. What will you do if first and second graders ask about these flags? And my answer was there is no. No early enough age to start having these conversations that are development mentally appropriate way. Um, and so the fact that. Free K even through fourth was sort of left out of that conversation felt kind of confusing to me because in the past we've. Been a school that has encouraged student voice in that way. Um, and encourage those conversations. So I was really disappointed by that.
Thank you.
I haven't spent a while. I forget how public comment works.
If you could come around and speak in all CSR, we're sort of in a bunker over here.
Uh, it occurs to me that only Chris, I believe on the board. Was around, but I was the student who spearheaded the initiative to raise these items. And I come with quite a few materials, but. And I kind of wanted to start with going off of what, what you said is that. When we were raising these flag, like when we were going through this year long procedure. Of making our curriculums, doing our research, writing our essays, getting all of this approved. And then going to the student body and the faculty. And getting their approval and only then going to the school board. We did, I believe, four presentations to each the faculty. K through 12. And to the students. We had after each of those, uh, after each, each of those presentations, we had an opportunity for faculty and students alike. To voice their opinions. We had anonymous surveys so that people could send in their opinions without fear of it being connected to their name. And what we found was overwhelming support. And I think it's to me very telling that. That survey happens the way, um, sorry, the most recent survey happened the way that it did. And I definitely agree that, that there, there is a procedure like. Myself and the students that I worked with, we set that procedure. It is in the school board policies. Uh, that any student wishing to raise any flag can do so by following that procedure. And I personally feel as the person who spearheaded this that the lowering of the flag should be the same. And I should also note that there is a, uh, in that referendum that the school board approved in 2020. The, whether or not the flag should be kept up is an item that should be or should have been voted on. At the town meeting every year. That's part of that policy. I have been in college uptown, so I don't know if that is the case or not, but regardless, there is already a procedure in place to. Take these lights down. So I'm on, I can't. Wrap my head around why a survey like that would have been sent out in the first place.
Let me, I'll just interject. I'm going to let all the public comment come through and I think I might. Take a couple of comments that might be clarifying. I don't want to get into a lot back and forth, but I think a couple of. Uh, you raised a couple of points that I think might be quickly clarified, but I want to let you guys continue being. Johnny, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, for, for starters, I just want to clarify because I think language here, especially with. What we're dealing with is super important. It's not just a rainbow flag. It's, it's a pride flag. And so to call it a rainbow flag. We've got rainbow stickers. We've got rainbow everything, but it's a pride flag because of what it stands for. So. Not, not to point fingers. It's minimizing to call it anything but a pride flag. Like it, it erases the, the work that we've done to get here. We're proud of it because it's something to be proud of. So that's just right off the bat where I'm headed. I also just want to highlight that food for thought, offer it up as you move through this next piece. You started your meeting with let's not single out individuals and what we're doing. What we are here for, but what my batch of folks is here for is because there have been individuals who have been singled out in a harmful. Fucked up kind of way. And that is what we're, we're trying to avoid pause. Let's not think about the, the Black Lives Matter flag and the pride flag as anything other than what it is. It, it might not represent the vast majority of folks here. We have individual students here who have been harmed by. Your, this process and, and the talk of removing something that makes folks feel seen. So I want to just mention that. It, it was, it was wildly important to us to start this meeting by saying, let's not single individuals out because we know that that's not. A productive method. It's not how we communicate. It's not what we're up to, especially as a school of this size. But we're here because there have been individuals, myself included, singled out. And, and when you, when this conversation comes up, you have to understand if you're on the, if you're on the opposite end of this. Imagine a group of folks talking about taking down your American flag and just feel how that. Messes with you and you, you feel like that's my pride. That's my individual. Sense of self, like that's how I'm trying to be represented here and, and then the way that this was so nonchalantly sort of. Thrown in people's faces. I just want. You to know, I work with these kids every day. You don't. And I, and I want to be very clear that this isn't just like, we don't just say it's harmful because. That's sort of how we've learned to soften blow for you guys. It's, it's harmful. These, these students are real people. They're young. And they've got a lot of time. Ahead of themselves to sort of like evaluate, like what is important in life? What do we think other, what does our community think about us? And so maybe, you know, we're not saying, we're not saying that. I'm not, I'm not trying to load too much on the, the act of removing it, but the fact that that part existed is harmful. I grew up here, been black and queer always. And I grew up in, you know, the, the Take Back Vermont where my bus drivers, my teachers, my principal had take back Vermont plaques. On their barns and on their houses, stickers on their cars. And those were people that I loved and trusted. And believed in, and I thought believed in me until I learned what that meant. And then I realized that folks are actually here. To take, it's not, it wasn't about me anymore. It wasn't about being loved and cared for, you know? I'm in this space where it, it, it introduced a certain level of distrust. Which then. Tainted the way I went to school. And, and tried to be a part of a community that I knew did not root for me or show up for me in that way. It was a different conversation then for sure. They were allowed to do that. It was on their homes. It was on their, 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 their own personal cars. And, and that part I did understand. But it doesn't make it hurt less. It doesn't make it any less harmful to show up in this space. As a black or brown person, as a queer person and think like, oh, I belong here. And, and that it's, it, it really is that simple, which is why it's also that frustrating. To sort of recognize that. This made up rule about a flag pole is so concerning to folks that we're going to. Ruin the way that people show up to educate themselves. Because sometimes that's what they're doing. They're educating themselves. They're not showing up to learn from the masses because they've learned that the masses aren't here for them. You know, and this is just, I really worry about the way that that. Impacts our students. We, we work with them every day. Every second of every day we spend here is thinking like. You know. What are we, what are we doing if not, if not that? Sometimes it's not even about the material. It's about, do you feel safe here? We talk a lot about community. We talk a lot about. Moving forward and having conversations. We do restorative circles. The work that we do is meant to like sit together and communicate. Whether or not you agree. The sitting together and the communicating, if a school not this small, if we can't do that. My worry is that no one can. And I'm not interested in being a part of that. Kind of community in any way, shape or form. So simply put, I just want to, to put that forward. As you move forward with your decision making and as members of the board. You, you recognize, it was the first thing you said, you recognize that it's not helpful to single out individuals. What if those individuals were children? What if those individuals were twelve years old, ten, seven? Right? Think about whatever life you came from. Maybe as a cisgender white person surrounded by cisgender white people. Were people telling you that the very simplest part of your life? Was wrong or to be hidden? No, I was going to sit here and tell you, no, if you grew up here in Vermont like I did, no one was waltzing into your classroom spaces and saying. You know, trying to take down your American flag, God forbid, you know, they wouldn't have done that. They didn't do it because that's not what we're up to. It, it was not, it's not productive to our learning. It's not productive to our classroom spaces. It's not. Productive to the way that we can sit in a space and like agree. To disagree. But we agree to disagree in a way that's not harmful for folks. We don't say agree to disagree and then let a bunch of folks get fucked because of it. That's not what we're up to. So I just want to present that to you guys and just think like. You say, let's not single out individuals. Do you mean?
Hey y'all, um, I was a student here, uh, several years ago. I grew up in Vermont my whole life in Cabot. And. The thing I loved about habit most growing up, and I think the thing that we're most proud of is that we always support our neighbors and that's part of our ethos here. And we aren't supporting our neighbors if we're not protecting the most marginalized groups in our community. I was not here. I just graduated and Lewis, uh, worked towards putting these flags up. And I was in my first year of college. And I was getting text messages from all my friends back home saying, isn't this great? Isn't this wonderful? And I was talking to my friends in New York. Uh, where I was at college and they were all saying, oh my gosh. I wish that I could have felt like that in my community. I wish that my community was able to empower students. To support other students that way, because this was a student led. You know, process. And I guess also I want to say real quick, because I don't want to take up too much of your time. Taking down the flags isn't a neutral act. It's an active act of taking something away. It's not just restoring it back to how it was before. It's actively tearing down the work. That community members have put forward to support marginalized groups. Black students exist, queer students exist. And it's totally spitting in the face of them. To say we don't support you enough to stand for something, even if it's a little uncomfortable or a little divisive. And I think it would be really weak will to go through with it, but, um. Thank you so much. For your support and your time and all the effort you put into the school. I really do appreciate it, but I'm also so happy to see that all y'all are showing up to support a public conference tonight. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Cheers. Thank, thank Tommy and um, thanks so much for all your work and your time and for letting me enter the conversation. Here for just a sec. I want to speak kind of narrowly because of the time, just sort of to the removal aspect and context. Um, a little bit because I think the removal is sort of the biggest piece. I think having a bigger conversation, a broader conversation about what goes on with the flags is just necessary for the community, you know? But just real quick, like context wise, right? Twenty twenty, right? Majority of Republicans were kind of down with the statement, the hashtag that was Black Lives Matter was turned into an organization. And I think, I just want to address what I think are some of the actual worries, right? Like of the thing, the politi- politicization of things and the like, the right of this. On the move excessive thing in the moment of twenty twenty and what that means, right? I get it that there was some level of worry about. Ideologically, where is this all going right in that moment? But we're in a different context now, and I just want to speak to the context as we think about removing this and just as, you know. With all of what has already been said at the table, right? Like, right now, even though our kids are. You know, born with a black president, you know, or afterwards, right? And they know that they get it. They think that we're post-recht or whatnot. Right now, I'm, I'm in four or five different schools. Doing racial literacy intervention work. Two of the schools I'm in. It's admitted that there isn't a male child that doesn't use that word. We're going back and forth. And I get that, that, that's in these kids' minds. They're not trying outwardly to be the most harmful kids in the world. You know what I mean? It's that. Um, there's a different level of license and what's okay and, and what humor means and, and whether they've got an understanding of the pain and history of the world. But contextually, right now, there actually is still widening wealth gap between the races, right? That's actually so. Nazis are in the street in Ohio and Florida, like right now, they're not being met with opposition by the police. Right? And in Florida and in Ohio, there are efforts to get books off the shelves, including by Julianne Moore. Who wants to write about what it is to be a freckle faced kid like I was and to be able to feel okay about yourself that. You know, if we run too hard with a worry about what it is to celebrate each other's identities, we really not only. Potentially have to deal with, but are currently right now dealing with what it is to be chased into corners about identity. And you can't even talk. About being different within the context of being white. These are things to worry about to me. And I think that removing the flag in the context of these things actually means something. It means something that the first act of business of this newest administration was to pardon unconditionally sixteen hundred people who we all have evidence did a thing. If that stood alone, right? It was a part of a principled effort. I, I get that. It's mixed also with a congresswoman last week being arrested for. With felony assault with federal agents because she was trying to get access to a building. Those things happening at the same time tell a story, they could write like of, of intent. Not just of actual fact of what's on the matter and what the actual written law is, but what is the intent behind it? Do we expect to celebrate each other as neighbors? And do we expect to tear each other down? And chase each other in the corners or not? And I think that people who want to see these flags down have reasonable reasons for doing so. I think they're being worried about politics and a whole bunch of other things are a part of the conversation. It's worth having that conversation. I think removing flags that celebrate the identities of minority and more not minoritized identity children in our community is dangerous because of the context that we're in. Lives at TikTok right now is highlighting the lives of individual youth on a national platform and getting them attacked physically, right? If there were more of an effort to try to shut that down, right? Like I could then maybe have a little bit of more room for trying to figure out, right? Like the other editing things, but. But that's not what's going on, right? In terms of context, right? BLM as a, as a large organization and as one with a lot of clout. What's BLM right now? In terms of context, right, BLM as a, as a large organization and as one with a lot of clout, what's BLM right now? It's a fairly defunct org. The leadership has been found to be corrupt, or at least members of it, right? They, they're not a powerful thing, right? Like, in terms of the worry of, of Black Lives Matter being some organizationally big thing, right, like, get it back to the hashtag, get it back to the idea, get it back to the sentiment of, are we able to recognize folks in our community or not, right? Context right now to the renaming of military installations after Confederates again. The re- removing of plaques that celebrate black and brown and queer identifying and women patriots because of the fact of the matter of their skin color or, I know this is not what was hoped for in this moment by people who support the policies that got us here, but this is where we are, right? The intent, um, i- in the policymakers is clear. And, and so for me, it kinda comes down to the flag being there. It's up there, the process that it wa- was through was a rigorous process, and I kinda like it when I was here, like, like, let's have such a rigorous process. You know, when we're thinking about what else to do with it. But I actually wanna put my voice behind to say, like, I, I actu- I absolutely support the flags up there. Regardless, and that part of that is because of this contextual piece, and because it really feels like a low bar, um, effort that signals, honestly, I hate to say it, to have to say it, but it signals to people coming from the outside here, we will not kill you when you stop here. That, to me, if that's a political statement, that's actually okay political statement, right? Because it is a piece of cloth, it hangs there, or doesn't the decisions that made it go up there are there. We're making decisions to remove it within these contexts, without, within renaming things after Confederate monument, right? Within all of the context of that, for us to remove it, I think really is to say that not only are we a community that is just not interested in putting any effort into courting the business or the employees or the s- uh, students or, or the money of people from away. We're actually interested in actively chasing you away from us. And, and I think that that, to me, is a big difference in the context, right? The potential power behind BLM and the moment that was twenty twenty and the moment that is now, right? It's proven that, like, it is not, the position against this is not a weakened position. It's not as though the voice that says, get rid of this, let's stop hearing from women, let's stop hearing from queer identifying folks, let's stop hearing from black people. That, that's not a minority position anymore. It's the, it's the articulated position of the federal government that says, I no longer wanna see your face on this plaque. I no longer wanna celebrate you. And, and it's just actually being done and happening, and I don't think that any one of us in this community, no matter where we stand, that, that's where we're at. You know what I'm saying? That that's how we feel. Absolutely not. I absolutely know that my neighbors, I have more in common with every single one of you across all of our ideological divides than I have it, that's different between us, you know what I'm saying? And yet, I think it's a moment we really should watch out, um, and move slowly and see what it means to be having our actions interpreted, what kind of way. And I'll swing back to that, like, our kids are right now perpetrating racist and homophobic harm against each other in a way that I've never seen. I'm not meaning this school necessarily, although I wouldn't be surprised. But like, absolutely in a way that I've never seen. And at the same time, even though I remember being in these schools in nineteen eighties and nineties, and we heard it a lot less, I feel like there actually was possibly more frequently venom right, behind those words and that ideology. But just because everything is now a joke, doesn't mean that everything is without harm. And there actually are Nazis in Ohio. There are actually Nazis in Florida who like to wear masks. They like to get online with our children and have them perpetrate the harm in a matter of jokes. I've heard the most disgusting and horrific jokes in our schools this year than I've ever heard in my life. I left the school the other day and went home and cried because I couldn't imagine that seventh graders were thinking about human bodies in that way. And so, anyway, I just wanted to offer up all those things and say that removing it is removing it. It's not a neutral act. And whatever got us here to have it, I really respect dissonant voices, all dissonant voices, and I hope to be like a part of any and all conversations that are resisted to keeping those flags up and having them there, but I really caution against what it signals and what it means for our marginalized identity students and also what it means for us as a community. Um, sorry, the one quickest last thing, I just feel like I gotta say, I was, I'm the, uh, the parent of a white and male student. I think he's probably even heterosexual, okay? My kid and myself, right, like, kids who are not heterosexual, kids who are not white, you know, those kids are expected every single day to be able to learn from people who have different racial experiences than they do, different gender identities that they do, right? Like, when I'm a queer identifying kid, if I'm learning from a cis and het person about cis and het things, I'm expected to just have that be a part of it. So I wanna flip this whole conversation on its head just real quick in terms of whether or not, like, my kid is missing out on anything or whether or not, right, they're being limited or he's being made to feel bad for being white or any of that stuff, right? Like, for me, my kid is equal to a black or brown skinned child and not less than. He's equal to and not less than a queer identifying child in this way especially. He's absolutely capable of learning from people who have different experiences than him without losing any of his own experiences, without shrinking and without becoming small. That actually part of his power, part of my power, part of our ability is to know that all my stories and all my identities still exist when I've made room for yours and that we're hanging and growing toward collaborative solutions and stuff. So thank you for that extra, but I just definitely wanted to put that in there, that it, um, I'm having an abundance mindset about what it is to share space with folks and, um, I'm happy to be me, not despite being white, but also not because I'm white. And I hope that we're not confusing things in this moment in our nation, and I'm glad that we get to have these conversations as a community, make sure that we don't confuse those things among each other, you know, as we hang out. Thanks a lot for the time.
Other folks like to share?
Here in Cabot, I'm not gonna speak well, cause A, I've got a whole bunch of teenager boys at my house and need to go. Need to go make sure that's all right. And second, because everybody here has already been like much more eloquent than I could be. And I just wanted to add my voice to, to express my support for these flags thing of, as people have noted, it's, it was a process to get them up. It's a negative act to pull them down. And I would specifically want to reject the idea that those flags are divisive. They are not divisive. If we had a society and a country where there is inclusiveness and that was the basic respect for other people, then, great, why would you, why would you single out Black Lives Matter? Why would you have a flag that says, these people are okay? But that's not the society we live in. Those flags are a lifeline, a symbol to say to people, this is a safe community to live in. And if we take them down, it is the same, it is not a safe. That's it. That's what you're telling me. Thank you very much.
Other folks?
Hey, I'd just like to add, um, you know, from the perspective of, of someone who has served on school boards before in my playing field and currently, you know, works here as a, um, counselor. I just wanna remind, like, school boards that your job is not to, to monitor day-to-day operations at the school, right? It's to provide oversight and helpful, like, policy support. And in this case, to me, like, this is one of those times where when you really think about why these flags are there, this, that was about like a day-to-day school project, you know, put forward by students doing the thing that they, like, set out to do, like, your launch project and here we are. And so I just think again, you know, it's reiterating that, like, whatever effort went into getting those flags up, there should be equally and as like honored because the policy states it. So just like that, it's just important for me to remind school boards, like, what, what are our jobs when we serve on the board? Um, and I hope that we can attend to, um, to like this issue in the same way we'd be attending to any, like, policy issue.
Thank you so quick, so big.
That has not spoken.
Raise your hand if you wanna speak.
Y'all did great.
This is so big. But I just wanna, I just wanna know, just cause I'm, I'm not gonna, not gonna be here all night, and I think the, the, one of the issues has been communication, so I'm just, and if I'm not allowed to do this, let me know. I just think my job as a teacher and educator in this space is like safety. And I have queer students, I have black and brown students, so if you're on the school board and you want our flags taken down, if you feel comfortable, just like raising your hand. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll raise my hand.
Okay, thank you.
Not for.
No, 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 not for any other reason other than you want those flags taken down, and I think it's important for, for me and the students that I protect to teach and take care of, to know that. Thank you.
Other folks would like to speak? Okay, uh, thank you for your contributions.
We have somebody on Luna.
Somebody on here, okay? Go ahead.
I think you might have to do it, John.
Um, I just wanna echo what everyone else said. Um, I agree with the other guy. They said it very eloquently and um, I don't have much more to add other than, um, as the leader of the GSA, you know, I have heard from my students that this really upsets them and it makes them feel less safe knowing that those flags might come down and they were all quite unhappy about the way the whole thing went down with it basically being kind of a sneak attack vote. They did not like that. So, yep, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
I'd like a chance, um, so if I could reiterate, um, it's, it's been said, but the, uh, the context that we're living in, it's really important to be thinking about. Really important to be supporting our citizens and our students right now.
Thank you.
Uh, here's at the very end of public comment, I do wanna mention, I have printouts of the work that I did, uh, alongside the other students. I don't know what the procedure is for handing out, like, papers and stuff. But at the very least, I would love for the school board members who were not here when that happened to be able to uh, the work that was done. So, those are on this table.
Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak?
I think Luna, you can meet yourself.
Okay, so we're gonna start our discussion, and what I hope is that, uh, from what, um, from what you hear from our discussion, it'll clear up some of the questions that remain in your, in your minds about how we're gonna deal with this. I guess I will, um, go first just by saying that at the end of last meeting, uh, we had those two questions that the board had raised. One is, do we need two polls? Second was, do we need to have, um, a general discussion about whether we should keep these flags in place? And so I did some research, looking back at, uh, board minutes from two thousand twenty and also conversations with our superintendent. And the first thing that became clear was that we did not indeed need two polls. It was a mistake, uh, it was a different sort of set of regulations that Matt Foster looked at when we first talked last meeting. And it turned out that under federal regulation, uh, you can certainly have any number of flags that are not the US flag on the same pole, as long as they're beneath the US flag. Um, so the second thing that I, and I was basically, uh, uh, spending a bit of time between then and now, just trying to track down what we did the last time we get these flags up and the process that went forward towards, uh, the students, uh, petitioning the board to have that happen. And so what happened back in two thousand twenty was, uh, Louis, uh, did a, basically, I think, uh, most of the year independent study, uh, researching, putting these flags up and the value of it, and made a couple presentations for a board about, uh, his interest in doing that, their interest in doing that. And at the same time, uh, we as a board were looking around at other schools to see how they were handling that issue. And so throughout the winter and spring of, like, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, I think we had at least two community-wide forums where, uh, the students who had been involved coming up with the pros- proposal, were able to talk to community members about it. Uh, try to go over their reasons as to why those flags were important for a school to have fly and also the process that we could have to have them fly. And I think, uh, that process was really powerful and, um, thoughtful. I think, uh, students even at town meeting had a, a table up where they could talk to the community as a whole about their proposal and why they were making it. The two things that I determined, that I found in my research, I put a few copies on the back of that as a board, I think in the spring of two thousand twenty, they made two, uh, unanimous decisions to approve. And if you haven't gotten one, there's a few extra up here. One of them is an addendum to a policy, and the other one stapled to it is a resolution. And without reading these in, in full, uh, my takeaway from reading those two, uh, documents is that the school board, uh, with this policy set is perfectly reasonable and proper for students to petition the school board to fly a flag that has a particular meaning to them. Um, and the key at the bottom here, it says, student expression uh, must rationally and substantially relate to educational goals developed through the following means. An independent course of study approved and supervised by cabin school faculty or a student-led faculty or staff facilitated effort to advance the goals the campus school has, its diversity, equity and inclusion policy or continues improvement plan. Goes on to say, a student, student group or administration official acting on behalf of a student or student group may petition the school board to approve the flying of a flag on the school flagpole or placement of a temporary installation display on campus. So that's in the policy. The second page talks about a little more of the procedure. And there were some questions earlier about, you know, uh, how long these flags fly and who determines whether they continue to fly. And so there's several paragraphs. And most of the first page is just a resolution that the school board approved saying, this is an important thing that we should have, um, representing our school and its values. But at this back page, there's a few paragraphs that just talk about, you know, how will we organize this? How will we either decide to keep this going or not? And so there, the first paragraph on the back side says, therefore be it resolved in support of the campus school's commitment to diversity, inclusion and equity that the school administration be authorized to apply to Black Lives Matter and rainbow five flags on the school flagpole through March second, two thousand twenty-one. So this was ratified, I think, in April of two thousand twenty. So it was almost a whole year. And I just say, as a member of the school board at that time, a major discussion that we were having was how do we know, you know, we're making this a broad policy? I wanna make a policy where if somebody, you know, next year comes into school and says, you know, I've learned a lot about this organization. I've done some research. I think it's important that we fly their flag. We wanted to make sure that these flags that were agreed to be flown for a year from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one were not necessarily gonna be there forever, but would have to be in some way reaffirmed as important by the school. And so the next paragraph talks about that. Says, be it further resolved that after March second, two thousand twenty-one, the cap school board of directors shall vote on whether to reauthorize the flying of the flags to the next town meeting day. To hold such reorganization votes each year thereafter during board reorganization, which typically takes place, you know, the first March meeting we have after town meeting day. The issue was that last year and this year, uh, we didn't get to that vote, uh, until where we are now. And going back to some of the minutes that I haven't fended off, but basically in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, um, a student or group of students came to our school board soon after town meeting day, I think, two months, it was April. And they said, we have, in accordance with the procedure and policy, we've surveyed the students and the staff in one case, and they are in complete support of us continuing to fly these flags. So it brings us back to this year, brings us here this year. And when the whole question of whether or not we need two flags, poles or one, came up, I went back and looked at, you know, the, the minutes that I was partnered to five years ago, and I realized that in order to continue to as a board, reauthorize the flying of these flags, we needed to have a check-in or a representation from the student body to say whether that was important to continue or not. That was the practice that had been established and I wanted to keep with that practice. And so, um, once we found that out, I contacted Jennifer, her principal. And I said, ideally, we would like to get a sense from the students at this point in the year, even though it's late, to, uh, try to survey the students to see whether, in some way, to see whether they are still in support of this. And so Clearly. As one school board member, I was trying to both honor the procedure and practice. But also knowing that. It'd be that very challenging to get enough context to. The students in the month before school ended, to have them, uh. Get the fullest idea possible of what these flags meant. And so I contacted Jennifer and said, you know, this is where we are. If it's possible to get, um, the student body surveyed. That would be great. This is what we know we have to do. And so, um. She worked with the student council. And, and talked to student council and had a discussion around. You know, which, number one, which grades should we have? Being surveyed on this question? And determined from her conversation with student council that it should be grades five through twelve. And so. The upshot of that is that with a month left to school. Uh, Jennifer made the decision to issue a very brief survey. That, uh, answered, that asked that question. She also included in it, an overview of what. The Black Lives Matter, um, flag and movement represented, and also an overview of what the rainbow pride flag represented. And so, I guess as, um. Clearly. If this, uh, if this practice continues. I think it's a responsibility, our responsibility as a board and a school to make sure that. The kids that are involved in the survey in the future. Have a much more full idea of what the flags represent. That was offered to them this year. But, uh. That's where we are now. And so the survey that was issued, I think, last week. Came up with, I think, uh. Fifty-eight, sixty percent of the kids saying yes, and about forty percent of the kids saying no. So. I want as one school member for us to just sort of, uh. That's the facts that I have to present to you guys. Um, I think the conversation we have to have at this point is to say. Uh, based on what. We know from past practice. Uh, from what we've heard from people, folks who came to the meeting tonight about. Their perspectives, as well of our own perspectives. Uh, how do we wanna move forward with continuing the policy? Just second, let me just finish, all right? Question is, we have warned on the agenda for tonight. On this matter of discussion and potential action. Potential is key word, you know, we may or may not decide we need to take any action at this point, we could postpone it to a subsequent meeting. I think it's important to take it soon. But I'll honor any, uh, anything you guys to have that offers.
Can I ask you a question? Going forward.
Yep.
This does not need to be done by survey, right? This, this is, the gay straight alliance could come and say, we wanna fly the black lives matter, lives matter flag, and we wanna. Fly the pride flag. We are asking you to approve that for this year and we approve it. Or don't, but we do. Not a survey, right?
I think, I think.
Cause I think the survey is dangerous. I think that if those, that information is shared with the kid, that sends a message to my kid in particular, it sends a message that. Just about half the school doesn't support saying your family's okay here. I think like, I don't think that's how this was done in the first place, there was no survey involved. So I'm not sure that that should be the process going forward.
From what I've found from the. Minutes that I read.
Yeah.
Is that, um. I think there were actually. I think one of the speakers that I referenced, you know, started on a survey. I think those were done with high school students and staff members in the past.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't mean that we.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a vote, a vote, yes, no. It was a survey getting people's, can you, can we allow Luis to weigh in on what that was?
Sure, Luis, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could clarify, um. There was a survey, uh, I believe it was sent out, if I'm remembering correctly, it was sent out to three through twelve. Uh, because those were the students that we had given our present tissue to.
To who?
Three twelve, I believe.
Okay.
That survey. In addition to having a yes and no option, it had an unsure option, it had another option. And it was not required.
Yeah.
It was not labeled as earned, students did not need to complete it. However, before that survey was ever sent out. There were four different presentations and forums that we had with faculty and with students alike. To educate, um, educate everyone and really get everyone up to speed on what this was, what we're trying to do, the benefits. How it affects our community. And only after that had taken place was the survey sent out. And even then, it was an optional survey and, uh, what. We had gotten then was, uh, from across the board, faculty and, uh. Rather, faculty was one hundred percent in a, uh. In agreement, I believe, and students was ninety percent in agreement, five percent opposed and five percent unsure or, um. Or no opinion.
This from grades three through twelve, the three to eleven.
Three to twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was. Basically everyone. Including faculty and staff.
Thank you.
So.
Frank, you had a question, go ahead.
Actually, I don't have a question, I have some history from when I was on the board. When Rory was chair. I was on the board when the students were still coming to the board. And given their. Petitioning the board could fly the flags for the following year.
Yeah.
And then, I believe. I get the impression that this. The students that were, that were involved with. The original effort had. Graduated out, then the following year, students. Didn't come to the board and. Principal kinda presented. What she thought was their opinion. And Rory made a motion. That. From that point going forward, that the board would. Instead of having annual votes. Um, leave it up to the administration because they better understood the pulse of the students. And to make the decision from there on. And that's when the board stopped having the votes. That was a few years ago.
Yeah, I, the last thing I can find that when Rory was chair was that in two thousand twenty-three. They heard from a student. Uh, I think maybe one of our students, the local refs, and she was representing. A survey or some sort of, uh. Student representative, and they were gonna do it for one more year, so two thousand twenty-four, last spring.
Last student I remember presenting was by herself as camp. And then, um, we had had these students show up that following year. But I do remember very big net resolution in those voting. Basically, turn it over to.
I didn't see that in my review, but I'll check into it.
Frank, I think I remember that happening as well.
I think that's a really important piece because I think. We have so much that we need to do as a community to keep things moving forward for our students and to have to revisit this and then put the burden on. The individuals who care the most, who are most likely the ones. Most vulnerable in these positions to make them have to come and plead the case annually, seems really. Not productive and, and harmful, absolutely. Um, I think that would be, that's how I would prefer for things to move forward is, that is the administration's call.
I also remember that, which is why I never brought it up when I was the chair last year, because I thought that it was just sort of. The status quo will remain until, you know, unless for some reason the school community says this is not representing. The way that they wanted to do, so the, I didn't think it moved into, brought to a vote, I think I said that last year. I just also wanna be really clear because I do feel like there was a big misunderstanding, the fact of all your comments tonight, which are very appreciated and actually very heartwarming and in the scary. Times that we live in, that so many people would come out and, um. Represent what can sometimes feel like a scary position to take. And it seems like you all felt like we, we were saying we wanted to take the flags down, and that was not what. This board was saying, I understand that the notes. Maybe were not clear, but there is always a, um. A recording of the minutes too, so it seems like that misunderstanding and then somehow the survey maybe got interpreted like. Chris had emailed. Jen to ask her to do the survey and she was sort of following the directions of this board to try to. Get that, and, and again, maybe. Could have been handled, should have been handled differently, um, maybe a misunderstanding of the research of what the history was, so. Um, just, I, I feel like. Jen was put in a very bad position of having of like, now like, oh, Jen sent out this survey and I just want it to be really known that like she. That was a request that was made of her, so I, on behalf of myself anyway. Um, just wanna say like. I'm sorry that that was misunderstood and misinterpreted and that was never intended. To say like, we, we want to take down the flags. Cause I, I never wanted that. I don't think the majority of us do. Or meant to have that come across in that way.
Other comments from board members?
My points were the same as before, that. I do feel that the flags are clearly divisive, just based on. All the emotion that has been presented already. And the, the opinions of people. That have spoken already. Sounds like if you. Are in favor of removing, what I think of as, I believe that the flags are divisive and they are political. Flags. And I don't believe that the removal is anti any person. So if anybody that would come to try to speak against that, be it another student that, you know, forty-two percent of the. Students. Said they don't want the flags, so if any of those students were to come, I feel like they, you know, that would create. Even more division between the group. So that's, that's my position.
I'd like to circle back to what Johnny said, I think with the opportunity to educate here, because I think. I, I disagree on the political, political aspect of it, I see them as symbols of. Equality, unity, support. I think you have to look at yourself and ask why you feel differently about that. And I think for people who are students who might feel. A negative thing about that, I think we should explore that. What is that? How can we? Educate and not dismiss what their concerns are, but educate and bridge that gap so we are all in support of everyone.
It's not, I don't, I guess I, my position was that I didn't feel like I wasn't supported people. Wasn't about people. It was about the specific flags themselves.
What the unity here.
And the way that it's just been. I don't know, feeling like it's sowing the, like, division within the community.
Yeah, I have to say, diversity, equity, inclusion are all positive things. And it's, it's one party in particular who is trying to politicize diversity, equity and inclusion by saying that's a bad thing.
Well, I believe, I agree that they're a good thing. Just. Not sowing the two of them together.
So they mean a good thing, but you still feel comfortable with it?
I'm not saying I disagree, I, it's. I just felt like. They are divisive.
How?
Just by the difference in people that will like them or don't like them up on the poll at the school. That's, I don't know, it seems pretty simple to me.
I think for a lot of people, it's a symbol of being welcome. And, and if anybody finds it a symbol of being unwelcome, again, that's like, check where that feeling's coming from. Because it's not saying. To anybody that they're not wanted here or feel included, you know?
Feel like there's more in-depth about it.
I agree, it's an educational opportunity for people who might look at it as a. As a negative to say, you know, why do you feel that way? And let's have a conversation about what this means to. Do certain people in our community to feel like this is a safe place for them.
Yeah. I would say too, I know that with our students, there's a lot of. The inappropriate jokes, the inappropriate comments. So I wanna make sure. Regardless of whether that flag is up there or not, that are, that we're not being performative in any way. Like, we need to be true, true allies and advocates and educate our kids. And what it means to be a, a community member in this day and age. So I just wanna drag that point home, I don't see it just as a flag as being. A flag and a symbol, I, I. It's so much more than that, and I can't see how that's political, I'm sorry, Jason.
Where would you guys like to go from here with this?
I'll make a motion to approve. The remaining, keeping the flags.
And should we say that with the understanding that we find that old resolution from two thousand twenty-one? That says that this does not have to be an annual. Re-upping, but that is sort of. Until the school adminis, up until if ever the school administration comes to. Present a different.
Can we just do that first?
Can we just do Alicia's?
Find out if we even should be bothering to vote on this, if we had that discussion and we made that motion and. I thought the policy should have been amended by what Frank had said. That we weren't the ones that were supposed to be in charge of this anymore.
Well, right now we have a motion on the table, so I'm gonna second Alicia's motion as motioned, and then I think we could come next time. And put it on the agenda to then see if this is something that would need, that we could then, um, do another motion for ongoing. I feel like right now to leave it hanging, um, so I second Alicia's motion. And then you could.
So a discussion on the motion, the motion is to. Continue to, to authorize as a board to continue flying the flags, they're there on the poll now. And to. Continue to research whether there is. Whether there was a change in that policy as to what causes them to be re-flown in the future.
Yeah, and double checking, forgive me, what you had mentioned, no, um. Our former student who put this together, the procedure that, the procedure, forgive me, the procedure, you said that was in there for removing, like. So that, that, there's a procedure in case there's the larger body want, the students wanted to change something, I guess what I'm saying is it's in-house, right? Like the students.
Unfortunately, it seems like that was an oversight, um, when we were originally putting this together, as it stands now. The issue that we were running into was that the board did not want to have these flags flying in perpetuity, they wanted to have a clause in place that would allow those flags to be taken down, should they be challenged? And the way that we decided, uh, to do that was to say every year after town meeting, uh, the school board. In whichever way they see fit, will. Hold the community and figure out if they should reauthorize it for another year. That we did not have, uh, any sort of stipulations in place for going to the community and finding out that information. Is an oversight that I'm just now seeing, uh, unfortunately. But I do think that it is very much in the spirit of this original project to have that authorization be in the hands of the administration. As opposed to the hands of the school board, considering that they are interfacing with students day to day and they have a better bead on the community as a whole.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Are we still looking into if Rory made that motion for that to be up, for the vote to be just up to the school administration, so that the board doesn't have to hold on to this again?
The motion is to continue to fly the flags. And to at the same time research whether there's been a change in the policy onto how they're re-flown. So one is the very fiscal act of keeping the flags up, the second is to do some research on whether the policy has been changed. And we could certainly circle back at a subsequent meeting and ourselves, make a change in the policy. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signal her by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Abstain. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thanks for the discussion. Thank you folks for coming and participating.
For all your work.
No problem. Okay, we're moving on to, back to the top of the agenda, right? Okay.
For the future.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're going to superintendent's report.
Ready for me?
Yeah. Thanks both.
Wow, it's kinda interesting to, uh, look at this report now that it's a month old, cause it's.
So much. Changed.
So much has changed, um. Think as you know, uh, or if you don't know, H four fifty-four. Did move out of the senate last Friday, right? Friday evening. So there is, uh, some new versions of the side, like some side-by-side comparisons and what, um. What they're looking to do around timelines, school consolidation, the, uh, foundation formula, um, so. Another, another key thing that I noticed in there was the, um, class size minimums for the different grade bands, right? So.
Back in.
We're back, yeah, um.
That's back in with the senate?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so if I remember correctly, it's like K. Yeah. So if I remember correctly, it's like K to K to three is around ten to twelve, right? And then progressively gets increases. So high school class sizes of eighteen, a minimum of eighteen. Middle school, minimum of fifteen, I want to say something like that.
It's a minimum.
Yeah.
That's right.
So we're not out of the woods with that.
No.
No. So so, yeah, well, we can definitely talk more about that as more information comes to light. But yeah, it was interesting that was it Thursday that they weren't moving, moving the bill out of the Senate? They were gonna they were gonna try and kill it there and then Friday evening they they had passed.
Big compromise.
Yeah, the big compromise. So, yeah, always a moving, moving conversation. Teacher negotiations, I know they met last week, right, Ellen? You were part of that.
Twenty seventh time.
Getting closer though on some resolutions, right? There were still a fair number to work through. So still, I, how many, are you gonna meet one more time? I can't remember.
At least one more time, June fourth.
Yeah, June fourth, yeah, okay. We have that, the SC facility director position has been filled. So gentleman moving from, I think he's in Wisconsin right now.
So Brandon did not want to take that position?
Did not, no.
It's a loss.
Yep, that sure is. So, but we are excited with, his first name is Tommy, I mean, his last name is blank, do you remember his last name? But wealth of experience, you know, as a facilities director in a, you know, a much larger district.
But he's gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt, he's gonna do the job of two people right now, pretty much, right?
So he'll start July first. And so the way that we're going to move our model is that you know, we'll have people onsite, your typical maintenance custodian folks. Tommy will oversee all of those people on the day to day, but he'll, he'll obviously do day to day stuff as as needed. He does have that skill set as well. So he's, he's not just the administrator, he does have technical skills as well. So definitely looking forward to having him come on. We, we've been we've been for the curriculum director position, Des is moving on, moving to Kingdom East to be their curriculum director. So we did interviews last week. And it looks like we've made an offer to a candidate and they've tentatively accepted. So not sure on if they've signed a letter of intent yet or not. That happened late Friday as well, so. Yes, yeah, we had, we had a very decent, we had a very good pool of candidates, so very happy with, you know, folks that will, the person that'll step into that role. And myself having done that job for many years, I will help in the transition, take on some of the the federal grant application process to help onboard that that new person. So. Let's see, we, I talked to you a little bit about the strategic plan earlier at the, the retreat. Let's see, we're just, we're wrapping up our spring spring assessment window, so our STAR assessment, our final progress monitoring, that closed today, right, Jen?
Nope, end of the week.
End of the week, thank you, June thirty. No, May thirtieth.
Oh, yes.
Yes, not June thirtieth, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You've given a lot of snow days this year.
Don't say that.
And then, yeah, we have some, some updates from our technology department there from, from Scott. Don't know if you have any specific questions about that, but we're planning on rolling out some new communication tools for next year. Hopefully get us to communicate with more people in a variety of different ways and also looking at the substitute teacher tracking and scheduling, which will be really nice to be able to just get that more digitized and systematic as opposed to the system that we have now. So. Any other questions about the, the report?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so my principal report, I did a little bit, but communication on the top here, talking about our PBL, our Project Based Learning Exhibition is June third. I just got the updated schedule of events from the leadership team, so I'll be sending that out tomorrow morning to parents and to our community. So we're very excited. We have a lot of great events that will be happening all day, really from nine o'clock till six P M. We will be having some snacks as well for that evening. Then we have June turn coming up. There are a plethora of different options that students are going to be able to partake from ninth to twelfth grade. And there's a, like I said, there's a bunch of them, you can look at those. So very practical things like basic car maintenance to learning how to do stained glass, so just like intriguing pieces. The newsletter, again, is very popular, is still doing really well in the community. We have at least a hundred eighty views of it still in today, in May, which is amazing for weekly updates. Celebrations, we had an amazing prom last weekend. Eric and I attended the prom along with about ten other staff. And we had about, we had twenty nine out of thirty eight of our students attend, and it was an amazing night of lots of dancing and everyone was wonderful. So it was really fun. There's some pictures of Jacob Tid, who is one of our seniors, who was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society on May fifteenth. I believe he is the first student in a very few many, many years, I'm not sure what, to get this honor. So it's really wonderful. We also have a lot of our educational field trips that are in full swing right now and kind of fulminating their experiences of some parts of their PBL learning. We are of course hiring three positions right now, a librarian, a five, sixth grade teacher, and a kindergarten slash first grade teacher. So those, we have plenty of applicants, so we're going to hopefully be able to put those together and get some scheduled interviews for next week. We're very excited for that. And then, of course, the last piece is our summer school is not going to be running this year. But our after school program will have the carnival on May thirtieth, again, this Friday. And then hopefully we'll be able to get that up and running at a much faster capacity next year, starting out. So. Questions for me?
Have more chance to get interest drummed up ideally for the summer school program.
Yeah. Definitely we'll be working on some pieces of that over the summer.
Sounds like you had staff ready to go if you had enough kids.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I think just being the newness of having a summer program is probably, probably other, probably families are already made of plans or different arrangements, but hopefully next year we'll be able to do that.
And that was going to be about five weeks per day?
Yes, I think it was four days a week for six hours. Yep.
Jennifer, you mentioned that our kids might be able to go to Twinfield for their summer program. Would it be possible to have transportation provided for those kids or?
As far as I've been told, through Bethany Hill, she's just after school program director, she has reached out with also Kylie as well to figure out if students can attend over there. They do have the option to, but I believe transportation is on right now. Just because of the distance. Any other questions for me?
Thanks, Jennifer.
I had something I wanted to share with you. I didn't know how to present it, but I felt like observing the school, working in the school for one year was first of all, a great experience. I want to thank all of you for for having me here, so to speak.
Thanks for being here.
I will probably come back to Cabot because I made many friends and it's kind of like, you know, I traveled all over the world and there are three or four spots where I always go back. Some of them could be as far as Macedonia, but some of them could be as close as Cabot. Since I will be in Canada, I made, I made a lot of friends here. But I felt like I wanted to share with you and we're not going to do it right now in the interest of time because this was supposed to go in the, in the board packet, but I didn't prepare it on time. So I'm just, this is just basically my observation, they only involve me, they were you know, imagine me as an outside server coming to Cabot, being here one year and see what's going very well and what needs a lot of help. And what you want to do with this is whatever you can put in the next board package, we can discuss it, but because we already had a, you know, lengthy discussion, I would just give you the paper and and I do decide what to do with it and if we discuss this on the board meeting in June. And again, and my goal is to see if I can participate somehow in the positive of continuation, I would say of Cabot. And I had to try to make it short. I had like four pages, but I made two. I think it's two there, maybe one.
Thanks, Eric. Great, thank you, Eric, for being here this year.
Thank you.
So student service report, that's just in our packet, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, anything we should highlight there?
Not, not particularly, no. You know, obviously pre-K enrollment is, Bethany's been working really hard on getting that that work done. There's some A O E updates. Talked a little bit about after school and summer at the board retreat. So.
Okay. So Jennifer, student representative report?
Nothing this time because they're working on other pieces.
Okay.
Busy with prom?
Yeah, very, very busy at prom.
Okay. So going out of board discussion, we are the tan note. And so some, does anybody know what the tan note is all about? A couple of people, it's kind of part of our school board vocabulary, but like, you want to go into it?
So yeah, tax anticipation note. So this is a way for you as an organization to bridge a gap before tax revenue starts coming in. So essentially borrowing money from a bank. And something that you need to do every year since, you know, I can't remember exactly when that first revenue comes in from.
Till July, early August.
Right, so you have a little from that, that July one date, you know, when the fiscal year starts. You have a little bit of time. So the purpose of the tax anticipation though is to cover your costs while you're waiting for that, that tax revenue. So Posumsik is, the Posumsik Bank is the, the one that has been winning out on a regular basis. They have the best rates. And Conchessi, Mike Conchessi, our business manager, just thinks that they're the best one to work with. He went out for, you know, obviously compared with multiple other organizations and he recommends Posumsik be the one that you approve to cover your.
Do you know what the interest rate is?
I can't remember what he told me after, but it's, it's a really good interest rate in comparison to the other ones. Yeah, he said they consistently outperform. So I can get that information for you though.
That's fine. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the tan note.
Yep.
So that process can go forward.
Yep.
Your motion.
So moved.
Well, those are in favor of approving the tan note so we can get some money to pay bills before the taxes of, of the summer come in, please say aye. Opposed? I'm saying, it's done, it's approved. Hey, Jennifer, new hire recommendation, high school social study.
Yeah, so Daniel Pirella. So just take a step back, we actually were able to have students in eighth grade to eleventh grade be a part of some interviews. Not only as an interviewing committee, but we also invited two candidates, which we didn't pick. But they came, they came and did a mock, a lesson in front of the students and they really enjoyed that. We did have to move forward with a different candidate because this gentleman has a lot of experience in the humanities department. And he's already taught some of the classes we're already working with and his PBL knowledge is immense. So I'd really love to see him as a part of our community.
So, excuse me, just to back up, you had, you had several candidates, but only and they all, they all participated with the students, but this was the best one.
This one was, and we did sit down with that group of students who were in those mock interviews and the lesson and say we, this gentleman did not have enough time to get
Oh, gotcha.
to finish the process. We would like to have had him come in. And we did talk to the students about that as well, and they did understand the reasoning behind this, but they did not know we picked this person as a candidate yet.
Okay.
We wanted to wait for, of course, board approval before we move forward.
Gotcha. And so he wasn't able to go through the whole process of issues, but he felt he's the strongest candidate.
Absolutely. And then we would like to also, once he's approved, to be able to have a little face time with the students with him. And he's already, well, he's kind of already working-ish with Ian to see what he has taught in the past this year and also working with the team to see where they're going for next year.
So where is he coming from?
He's actually in Barton. So that's where he is and his kids will be going to Barton School. So he's very excited. He did come here for us and had a great.
Teaching in Inisburg this year.
Oh, he's, so was he teaching in Vermont?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
So you're, you're happy with it?
We are, we're very happy with him. His knowledge and experience is vast.
Cool. Motion to approve hiring Daniel Pirella as our new social studies teacher.
We'll move.
One second.
Further discussion. All those in favor of Daniel coming on as our new teacher for social studies, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. New school nurse.
Yes, so with the termination of the contract between the Plainfield Health Center and Cabot because Christine resigned from that position. Christine does still want to stay with us as a school nurse. We did go through an interview with her and other candidates as well. And the team really would like to keep her with, again, her vast knowledge and already familiarity with our students and their, their needs. So again, I'd like to get a student, like a approval for Christine or Chris to say this.
Your motion to do so. Second.
Second.
All those in favor of hiring Chris Dicker back as our school nurse, discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we heard before, this will, this is like a budgetary increase that we hadn't really budgeted for, right?
Correct.
What, how will this impact?
The budget?
Yeah.
I know Michael and Sassy has looked into that. I'm not sure what the numbers look like. We can get to you for that for sure. If we had known previous to making a budget, we would have been able to put her in there. But we will have to budget for that position for future use of time. Because half of the stuff that Plainfield was trying to work with us is, we don't do anything. Like the community piece and all those pieces, so.
Yeah, just wondering if, if anything else will have to be cut or that will just be a deficit for next year that we'll have to cover. Just curious.
I'm not sure. I did try to budget a little money in places like maintenance. There might have to be a little bit of cutting in some areas, but again, Mike and Sassy will work in July to look at those numbers and see what we can kind of go through the process a little more, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's, it's extra, but it's unclear how damaging it's going to be.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we have two policies to look at. Jennifer? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of voting on having Chris continue on as school nurse, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, policy C twenty nine coming up. And this is is it, we're going to potentially approve this because it's already been read once, right? This is not in this packet, but it's in your, I think, digital packet.
That's there with one on the ball, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's there.
There you go. You want to take a look at it if you haven't already and keep her ready to approve it.
So we do have to approve this one even though the CCSU board approved it?
Apparently.
Talks about what the CCSU board will develop and implement.
It's on the agenda, so it must be that we need, mean, need to approve it?
Yeah, so that, that reads a little funny as, as I look at it too. So, you know, we're required to have continuous improvement plans that we submit to the Agency of Education and it's not Um. The Caldonia Central Supervisor Union is not. Working with you to develop it, so we, we develop the plans, you approve of the plans, um, obviously you can give recommendations and things. Things like that, provide feedback, but, um. But we're the ones that do that planning work, um. And, you know, we obviously need to make sure that it's aligned to the Vermont Education Quality Standards, which she makes reference to there, um. The new version of the E Q S acronym, um, is, is, uh, coming. Um, out July first, so there will be a new version, there's a lot of equity language in the new, uh, standards. So.
I move that we approve. Policy C twenty-nine.
I'll second. All those in favor of approving C twenty-nine, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Did anybody have a special?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rushing through it. Any discussion beyond what we've already heard? Now we can go to a vote, anybody, uh. Who is in favor of C twenty-nine approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The ayes have it. Next one is D twenty-three, selection of access to instructional materials. It's on the last page. I think from the, uh. C C S U made the, we talked about this, this is kind of a, uh. Uh, the short version is the C C S U is gonna have some guidelines for, um. Choice of instructional materials. Superintendent Disney will develop procedures too. So. You know, a librarian or a classroom teacher. Will have these guidelines, uh. As they choose their curriculum or materials to go with it. All concerns regarding the selection will be directed to the superintendent. So if somebody has a beef about something. Uh, this. Policy will say. The teacher followed the guidelines, they're good to go. You have trouble with the guidelines, you can talk to me, but, um. This is good.
And we have those.
Piece of policy, given what's happened around the country. Motion to approve this policy. Just gotta discuss it. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
I hear a second.
D twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving. Uh, D twenty-three, selection of access to instructional materials, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. We're down to our last one, legislative update. Um. We had a conversation around this earlier, um. I guess what I can tell you from what I've been reading the last couple of days is, it's gonna be kind of a. Crunch week in terms of, um. The Senate passed a bill. Um, and there, there's something called a conference committee that tries to. Fashion the best bill possible from the House and Senate's input. And then that bill will go to the full House and Senate for a vote. And the only issue is once the conference committee gets done with their bill. And gives it to the two houses, it can't be amended, it's all done. And so the next couple of days when. The conference committee is, um. Trying to figure out what to put in this final bill is kind of a crucial one. And so, um. Sent out a. Message to the school staff and to, on front porch forum that. Um, the group that our school board signed on to, rural schools come in, collaboration. Is, um, asking that this conference committee. Add several things that are not already in the bill. One of which is to get rid of the, uh, class size minimums. Another one is to insert language that says. If a school is gonna be closed, you need an affirmative vote of the community that is being closed in. And a couple other more sort of, um. They, eventually they're gonna have, if this goes through, there's gonna have a statewide effort to figure out what the new districts are. And the, um. The position of the rural schools collaboration is to have, make sure those are. Staff by legislators who are answering to the public and also take input from the regions that they're. Planning for before they make any decisions.
There's multiple bodies, right, or multiple represent, representatives from different organizations and.
Well, the idea was to try to get, um, the people who are drawing these districts to not just be representatives of the super tennis association, a school association. That people that are actually answerable to voters.
Right.
Um. So, anyway, um. It could be that there, I, I, I'm really not clear what's gonna happen, because I think. The bill that came out of the Senate last Friday, the governor came out reluctantly and said, what's in the bill now, I would not approve on a veto it. Uh, and so, I'm. It's up in the air as to what will happen. Um. I think the. There's been since January, a lot of, uh, questions raised about. How fast this change is moving? And how, um, whether it's really. Been thought out well enough to put into law. And so I guess the question is whether enough legislators will say, we need more time. To figure this out, or we'll say, we've gotta do something, so let's pick this one. I think there's starting to be a lot more people saying this is. To, to rush into such a big change is pretty. Pretty questionable. So we'll see. Anybody else have input on that?
So basically it will go back to zero if you veto, if you veto it, right?
If he vetoes it, it means that, uh, they would, well, he, he. Bill Scott has vowed to bring the legislature back in a session this summer to, until they come up with something that is acceptable to him. Um. Remains to be seen what else is gonna happen. Um. Anyway, it's gonna be an interesting week or so. They're already probably two, three weeks later in session, they typically, typically try to get out there by. My, you know, May tenth or something.
Did see something about how much that costs us for every extra week they're in session, which I never really thought about, but.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Yeah. Anyway. Anybody else? Thank you for, um. For the retreat this afternoon and, um, thanks for participating in this meeting. And, uh, I want to apologize if I have, uh. Suggested having a survey and that was in, in, in error. Uh, I was going on what I could find from the. Minutes I could find, but I will do diligence on trying to figure out whether. It could have been underpinned.
Well, you also sent it to us about yours, so, you know, here's the history and, yeah, so. I don't think you're the sole owner of it, you know, it's.
Did respond and gave the opinion, so you know. I mean, you don't have to beat yourself up, that's what I mean.
Well, I think.
I mean, you know.
I think the survey got misinterpreted or. That was difficult for a lot of people.
Yeah, but I almost have the impression that, you know, either one group or the other wanted to influence. Sometimes I think it's healthy, I mean, these kids can ask a lot of questions, they can do research, I mean, they. They should be able to do research, you present it, they vote. And sometimes I have the feeling that that's then their true opinion. But if it gets too much of a discussion, especially when adults get involved, then it's not the kids anymore that decide, then it's the. The school, the parents, the, we want the kids to have the vote, and I think it was a really easy and, and fair way to do that.
That's good. I guess the, the staff just somehow.
Right, right.
Like, timing wise, I get it, like, we'd like to have this by this meeting, so, look at it, it was sort of like urgent, please do it today, they maybe felt like, oh, the board is. Wanting to take this away from us, which isn't necessarily.
I think Johnny made a really good point that anything can be a learning opportunity or teaching opportunity, and with something that felt rushed to them like that. I think they didn't feel like it could be, maybe, but I think that it's a good, it's a good takeaway. Right?
Yep.
And we, it's not. Probably not our responsibility in the future on that one anyway, so.
Well, I will, I will, I'll look into the second part of our motion there, see what I can find, get back to you.
Okay.
And it's also.
Future agenda.
It's okay to put things back on the table, I mean. We can't say another flag is gonna be there forever, right, I mean, that wouldn't make sense, so it's nice. It creates a discussion, I want to feel the more.
Well, and the way that the policy is written is that a kid could come into the school tomorrow and say, hey, I wanna fly this flag and start this whole process all over again.
Right.
And then.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as Luca said, um, Louis said, that was, that was the intention, it's not to have the. Just to have a, a process where something else or something different can be in the future. Uh, on the fight pool. Anyway, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, I motion to adjourn.
Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again for spending so much time together.
Adjourned at seven forty.